Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, we'll call them, you need to order at 6:00 PM on December 20th, 2021, at 6:00 PM on Monday, at the town hall upstairs. A motion to adopt the agenda, please?
It's all moved.
Second?
Works like that.
Okay. Do we have any corrections or additions or changes? If not...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'm just wondering about what the citation is for the executive session, please?
It's a personnel matter.
I'm wondering about the title in the section and the subsection.
It's, I can, I'll have to look it up, but it's for personnel. A person from, that works in the town wants an executive session with you to discuss personnel matter.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have two minutes today, we have two minutes. Let's take, let's take the minutes of December 6th on the Monday. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
Joe, I, I don't have anything that I want to, no, I do want to make two comments about the, about six minutes. One has to do with the number 11 committee report, personnel committee, where it's underlined items noted for further discussion, non-replenishment of comp time, and...
The under personnel list is sitting below. Oh, you're, oh, down here, okay, I'm sorry.
Number 11, under personnel committee report, on the back page, page four, underlined items noted for further discussion, non-replenishment of comp time, and harassment to whom reported clear eligibility in the policy. I just wanted to mention that John Gregory is the one who made the request for an option of non-replenishment of comp time, and I believe it was Ken who asked us to check into the eligibility of elected officials for the harassment portion of the policy. I don't think we need to add that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So what do you want to add about John?
I don't think we need to change anything.
Not, not anything, okay.
No. And the other thing is, under number 11 on the water committee, Suzanne asked whether the town had made application for the priority list, which the town must apply for. I double-checked my wording on that. I, I said, will the town apply for it? Because I really don't have, the authority as a single select board member to say what the town must do. So, there again, I don't think it's material enough to change, but I did want to just clarify.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Are there any other things or corrections to the minutes of December 6th? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as, well, I don't know if they're amended or as discussed.
No, I think they're...
As discussed. Okay, any, any, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
You can say a second?
Yeah, John. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The last, the second set is the meeting on Thursday, September 9th, which was the budget meeting. Are there any additions or corrections here?
So, Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering about the format of these minutes. It seems like it's a transcription of the, of the, of the meeting. Is that right? That seems like a departure from our normal practice for writing minutes, I just wondered about that.
There was so much concern, I wanted everybody to know exactly what was said, all the way down through, the, all the way down through the top paragraph, I mean, let me put it on, let's see. About, no, all of this, page four, turn four on down, it's not transcribed anymore. But that was my reasoning, there was, everybody was wondering what was said, until I said, I will tell you exactly what was said, so I wrote it all up.
So it's recorded? You took the recording and did the notes for it?
No.
I can see that on Fact TV, is it?
It is on Fact TV, because when this computer was set up at the last meeting, Kim forgot to plug this in, and so they didn't get very good reception. I have it down, I have it on this computer, if anybody wants to listen to it. And then the last three or four minutes are only, the very last 30 seconds of the last three or four minutes are, are, are terrible, the rest is all...
So should Bill, should this say, present online? It shouldn't read Fact 8 TV then?
Oh, they were there.
Oh.
They were there, but they couldn't, but we kept cutting out.
Well, I see what you're saying.
But they didn't record it.
So the recording is in your office?
I don't think it's this, sir, I mean, it...
I sent them the recording I have here. Our problem with this recording, and Kim has asked them in what we can do about it, is this computer, and probably my computer, and maybe Kim's computer, no, Kim's computer won't. My computer and this computer, which are kind of paired up, are the only ones that can play the recording. So if anybody wants them, they can take this, this computer and listen to it.
Okay.
I can't put them online or anything.
No, that's not...
They won't work.
Yeah, that's no problem. I think, I think it would resolve it, Bill, if you just add, next to present online, Fact 8 TV, the recording is available through Bill Hearn, so if anybody wanted to listen to the recording. Could you just add that in line three, please?
Oh, where do you want me to add it?
See where it says, present online, Fact 8 TV? Just put a sentence next to that that says, recording is held by Bill Hearn.
Well, it's not held by Bill Hearn, it's held by the Selectors Office.
Okay, held by the Selectors Office, thank you, Joe.
Are there any other additions or corrections to these minutes of the night? If not, can we have a motion to accept the minutes as, as discussed, or as amended now? So move, okay. We have a second?
Okay.
If we have no other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Jack, you're, you're on the house you're here now. Tell us about why the school can't find out how much money they have. Seriously, it's really, it's really a very shameful thing.
You won't get this through to me. Okay. We have, you know, we went through ECOWEP about a year and a half ago. We had a period where the superintendent and an accounting firm were acting as the de facto finance office. We hired, for my objection, hired a young lady who had no school finance background to be the, to be the head of fiscal office. We then allowed an assistant superintendent to, without our knowing it, to be writing checks and assigning money from what's called the ESAR account for emergency services money that Bens gave us. And when we brought the accountants in, they said, my, this is a mess. And what? And weirdly enough, part of the mess was made by the very accountants that were writing the books, because they were the ones that, we are completely in a central situation, where the people auditing their books are some of the people that created their books. What kind of errors have been made? There's no cash, but we have things, and I'm saying this, is this on Fact TV, by the way? Because some of this gets into sort of, sort of excruciating detail, and I want to be a little uncomplimental.
We don't need all the detail.
Well, we'll just say, money that was assigned to, to, to retirement fund seems to have been recorded in the disability fund, things like that. There are none of those errors. There are a couple, however, that you care about, you care a lot about. For example, school, we send our children to middle school, and that we pay, we pay tuition for that. Well, normally, that's done for students that go to Bell's Falls by means of cash transfer with a note. Well, the accountant, when they were there, decided that they wanted, they wanted a vote of the board and a formal bill, except they didn't tell anybody. So there was no formal bill sent, and the money sat in our account, and didn't sit, and wasn't transferred to, to the Rockham School District. And so we're getting, so it's, oh, surprise, surprise, the Unified School District had a million dollar plus surplus. Now, I've been doing this stuff for a long time, and there is never more than a 3% variation in the money that we assign, assign at the beginning of the year at actual expenditures, because over 95% of it is encumbered literally on the first day of school. So it's not possible. And I've been letting my hair on fire about this for the last couple of months, because I've been hearing, oh, we've got these circuses, and boy, what are all these things we're going to be able to do, when in fact, that wasn't possible. So, we, we were in a situation where, I don't know right now if some of these numbers, some of this goes back to 2019. So it isn't just on the outgoing finance director, not even some of it, on the outgoing, on her predecessor. But this is, but some of this apparently has been carried on since 2019. So, right now, we're in a situation where we need to go and see, back when you were there. So we need to go back and see if, if numbers sent to the state were accurate, and what we can do about it. The first indication that that was screwed up actually came when, when Kim brought to my attention the fact that we thought we had a, we were under spending threshold, because the net revenues, a couple of years ago, the high school, found that in fact, not only were we not under the threshold, we're over it now, and we were being charged a, a, an assessment, an additional assessment for being over the, over the threshold. And that's not what you approved, and that's not what we approved. So this needs to be cleaned up. Why it also affects you is because the audit, all our timelines are dependent on auditors. When are they going to get these folks cleaned up? Assuming that they do, assuming that we even think we have confidence in them cleaning them off. So as a consequence, I know what our expenditures will be, what our expenditures will be for the upcoming year, but I can't tell you what the revenues are. If I don't know what our offsetting revenues are, I can't set a number and send it to you. So the question is, how soon is that going to get done? It's going to get done when the auditors jolly well decide it's going to get done. So here we are, I normally would have a budget done today. I don't have a budget done today, I have a budget done for any district. Now, except on Rock, I work for Rockham, but I'm certainly on the budget committee for the other ones. And if I can't, if I can't have offsetting revenues, which can be as much as a third of expenses, I don't have, I can't submit a, I can't submit a budget for voter's approval, I don't know what the numbers are. Which means that if we get them in early January, we could probably still make it. If we get them in very late January, my 40 days are a problem, and it means that we'll probably be submitting, submitting budgets for approval in April.
That means two taskbooks we get, perhaps, like we had to do.
You are hearing me loud and clear.
Which costs, which costs the town a lot of money.
It costs every town a lot of money.
And the town puts extra work.
You aren't kidding. I, I, you know, we've gotten bills from Rockham, not Rockham, from Westminster, for the extra cost, and I've said, the only problem I have with that is why you aren't sending, why Raffin and Abbott aren't sending them too? Because it is extra work, and it's a, it's a disgrace. And I feel, I'm, I'm not the accountant. I can work with the numbers I've got, but I can question them, and I've been questioning them for two years, getting louder and louder about it. And this one, and one of the reasons that your assistant superintendent was not given the grace of resigning on her own, because of this. And one of the reasons that I'm suggesting to all the school districts that we really may want to, somebody else auditing these going forward, that I think it's an ethical violation to have, have your auditor auditing your own book here, if it's only for a couple of months. But it's something you don't do, and that's one of them. And a lot of this are errors that go back to the conversion from our old finance system to e-finance, which still doesn't allow you to do annotations, still doesn't allow you to make comments, to explain expenditures, which still gives you tenuous access to describe what the money's for, or what to you. And it literally makes all subcategories when you're sending, when you're writing a check to a vendor, and you've gotten multiple, you've gotten multiple things that you're buying from them, it doesn't, from, that come from multiple accounts, by the way. You're only allowed to make one entry, so you literally have to create a separate set of documents on Excel spreadsheet, which is a cause error, and you have to do it all manually, which, I mean, this is 2021. So, that's just yet another, another complication. It's a type of system that no, no business in the rural would ever use, and it's forested, because the state's trying to contract, don't ask me why.
Well, wasn't, wasn't it the state asked, because it's, it's a state's program, and they asked certain, certain towns to be the guinea pig, and you think well, well, decided they wanted to be a Rockham, whatever it is?
That's what happened. And if that happened before I was on, on budget committee, and obviously, I, as an old IT guy, you never signed up to work, to use beta, not if, not if you possibly can, because it's a, that's garbage, that's true. But the, the rooting was nobody to fix itself. When we were, when ECOWEP, we brought a consultant, and they said that you have the smallest finance staff for a budget the size of any, of any district in the state of Vermont, and yes, you in the state of Vermont, and there are going to be difficult errors, because you simply don't have enough staff to catch it, you don't have enough staff to really run the operations. What will, you would need a person just to oversee the conversion process, and you don't have it. And as a consequence, we were still finding a ton of accounts that had not been completed even as the last, even as the last year.
Who's in charge?
Good question. Who's in charge, ultimately, we've gone through, we've gone through three, gone through three superintendents. We are, we've had two finance directors and an accounting firm. The one constant is reports. So they have owned, they ultimately own what the staffing was for this department. They own the fact that they were told that their, that the staffing was inadequate. They had oversight over superintendent, assistant superintendent, they're kind of remarking, pulling, pulling around with the, with the ESAR funds and pulling money out, you know? But you've noticed a very loud, messy couple of court meetings about that, in school, from the supervisory union board. But ultimately, it's on us.
So what's your next steps till we solve this?
Good question. Right now, we're bringing in, we're continuing the audit process. We're obviously trying to hire a finance director that has experience. We made a pledge to Andy House, who's our current superintendent, to let him spend what he needs to fix it. I'd say he's not a finance guy. We really, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, Jake and I are the only guys with fiscal backgrounds on the, on, on any of the boards.
A new audit, a new auditor?
New auditor, definitely.
Is this a auditor, former auditors that you've used? The same ones?
This is RHR, it's been the one we've been using for quite a while. And that's also a consistency. And so the question should be asked, and you're about to ask it. If it's the same auditor that let this slide for two years and worked on the books, why are they still employed by you?
That's right.
I think that's an excellent question, and one that we will be dealing with shortly.
Well, my question is that, this should have been picked up by an auditor. I think the auditors have an absolute responsibility. Look, I worked with auditors all my life in business. We, we've worked with one here. The auditor is the one who raised the flag. They didn't raise any flags, so what were they doing?
Well, isn't that an interesting question? Under, under state law, the audit that's required is really basically reconciliation, at sort of the most basic level. I've been saying since I got on school board so many years ago at this point, that this is kind of an audit would allow for all sorts of errors, and is not the sort of thing that I would, I'd use to run a grocery store based on this kind of an audit. It's not, it's not a proper audit. This year, we're actually getting a proper audit. But it's ironic, because as you said, it's audit by the same people that should have been fixing this thing back in 2019.
What's your timeline?
Well, you know, a quick course, we're, we're in a sort of odd position, because we, you know, if I changed auditors now, not that it's up to me, it's up to these boards, that would put months on this process, and we don't have months, because I've got, you know, we got, we got, we got tax bills to get generated. So the first thing we need to do is get through this process somehow. And I hope, and so the first part of my mind is having, is getting the audit completed. The second one is, hopefully concurrent with that, is finding a VASBO certified finance director with some years of experience. We've identified a person that was, that retired a couple of years ago, but since they haven't signed, I kind of hold some confidentiality in place, but that's not you, but it's somebody who, who does know this, and has some experience with, with e-finance, and somebody I, I trust.
Bill, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Okay, you keep talking about audit. Whenever you said auditor tonight, you are talking about professional auditor.
RHR Smith.
Say again?
RHR Smith.
Okay, because, because I was thinking, it's so, how were, how, I don't understand, if you could explain to us how RHR Smith... Were they, day to day, in the financial, did they, did they people that...
Chris Pratt, the superintendent at the time, said that he would manage the process until we restaffed. After a fairly short period of time, it became clear that he assigned some of that work to the assistant superintendent, William Carey, and he brought in initially as advisors, but they ended up working on a day-to-day basis, RHR Smith staffers.
Okay.
I've not seen the contract, and I've asked several times, because the scope of work seems to vary depending on who you ask, so I want to see the exact contract, assuming there is one, that finds your scope of work. As it was, find what's initially was to complete the, the charter accounts and execute the transfer, and to help manage the day-to-day stuff such as with NITI. But I think it's fair to say that, again, the reason why Chris Pratt's not there is also because of this mess. We keep firing people, it's not helping.
Well, this is wonderful news, but what is to fix?
What, what can...
What can the town expect happening?
Well, you're asking the question that we're, we're asking. I mean, you know, I don't have day-to-day, I, I'm not running the finance department, because this would not happen. You know, any more than you're running it, it would happen. But the reality is that I'm not running it, and I, and it's not proper for a board, a select board, for school boards to get involved at that granular level, you know? That's why you hire professionals. We've got to, we've got to find staff, we've got to find enough of them, and we've got to make sure that the charter accounts are bulletproof, we've got to work with the vendor, you find the folks that created e-finance to complete the, the kind of additional steps, like having an annotation line, and having, having some of the stuff you need to write normal fiscal reports. I don't know how the hell the other, so many other towns that are running this stuff are not having the same kind of errors, except because they staffed up properly, and maybe they had, had people sufficient experience to run it, but we didn't.
And you estimated how much you're in the hole?
I actually don't, I think when all is said and all is done, I think that we're probably not in the hole as an SU. Now, a lot of this stuff is, you know, internal transfers, like I said, the, the business about whether or not we actually paid, put the money into the retirement account instead of the disability account. So that, we can get that cleaned up, that's what, if indeed, that's what happened, I'm trying to imagine. That, they were matching checks on this as of, as of about five, six days ago. The big one really is going to be the tuition stuff. And that's, that's really the only one that I worry about, because that's, that's real money.
Well, you already know how many children we have that are tuitioned out in each of the schools. That's in our brain.
Yep.
So we have a figure.
I don't have a figure tonight, but I'll have a figure for you in a day or two, if I can have the time.
So whatever we paid last year, moving forward, like a level plan, the type of thing?
No, it doesn't work that way. The only reason your budget's bobble up and down as a small district, this is back when, when we were independent. Now, the reason why you get these 5%, 10% swings year to year is all about, it was all about the middle school tuition. Some years you'd have six kids, some years you'd have 16. And depending on how many you had, there is no, we don't have any discretion about this, however many go to middle school, we pay the bill. And if the bill changes from what we estimated, that's probably 80% of your surplus, or your deficit year to year.
So you began by saying 3% difference. What's a percent now?
I still think, this year, I, we're, we've sent exactly the same number of kids we estimated this year. And some of that's due to the wobbling, because we've got Westminster, and I've indicated here. I think that at the end of the day, we should be fine. The question I don't have secure, that I can't secure about is those past years, where the numbers submitted to the state are the ones that we approached. I don't know that. I need to know that, you need to know that, but I don't have it. I would say, yeah, the legality of it is defined, but I can't tell you with any certainty that they're fine, and until I can, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you it's all going to be better, you know, a month from now. Because I don't know. All I know is the numbers that I have from expenditures, I know what we spent. I know, you know, I know pretty close to $1,000 what we spent. What I don't know is whether or not... What I don't know is whether or not we have offsetting, whether the offsetting revenues from FED, type 1, type 9, type 4, from money that the state gives us for special ed. I don't know if those were correctly calculated by the office. I know what we had, but I don't know, I can't prove to you that they're accurate, because I don't, you know, that's what the auditor's for.
Sounds like a lot of people aren't doing their job.
I'd say that's a pretty good guess.
This is nothing new either, when I was on the school board.
What?
Nothing new, when I was on the school board a few years ago, it was always a special needs that was always a problem. And then they hired Edie to swear everything right.
Well, you'll remember, I was on the high school board, and Edie's predecessor, I personally walked out the door.
Yeah.
Because it was clear that we had four years of books that were effectively inaudible. And I wanted to call, and I wanted to call state to release some of them, because I thought they were that bad. We did clean that up, as you recall.
Yeah, yeah.
It's still, we ended up, because special ed stuff is so far off.
Yeah.
Like 10 years later, we ended up with the, we ended up with assessment by the state that we've been appealed for like half a million dollars, which I knew was wrong. Their numbers were wrong, because Bill James is basically a one-person accountant at the Department of that, another agency that's completely underfunded in terms of its financial controls.
I don't know what it's going to take to get their on the record.
There's one principle of management, which is called, there's no such thing as one error. Once you find one, you just tease it apart. And when you do, all sorts of unsolved follows up. And this has been going on for at least a decade at the state level, and at least that long, in not just our district, we're just a long time ago, we didn't get a lot about it.
Was Edie revered in her job?
Edie was so much more competent than her predecessor. Then she was doing fine until the e-finance thing happened, and until her disability really started getting the better of her. And again, she didn't have anybody to manage the conversion. And she was, in her own way, very good. Everyone else thinks she could handle it in her spare time. And that was a terrible.
Well, Jack, I think we, I think we can talk about it all night long.
Well, I think, I think I've given you all.
We have a big agenda, but you need to, you know, keep us informed of what's going on.
Yep.
I feel that the town clerk is very concerned, because of the tax bills will be the second or third year.
What's her deadline, and what is the ratification of that, Joe?
I don't know what the deadline is, but if you don't get it on the warrant by a certain date.
We have a 40-day thing, there's a.
And then if something happens, and then you can't send, because you don't have an approval, so you can't set the tax rates, you can't set the bills out. So you have to set an estimated bill, and then you have to follow it up with another one, which we have done, what, two years' bill was it? We've done that? Was it one year?
Two years ago.
Yeah.
This year, we got it.
Part of the one that happened before was due to the Act 46 course conversion. And that one, you know, but I still, I still take your point. It is, it isn't the way you run a business.
I mean, we can't fix the school, but we'd just like to know what's happening with the tax bills.
Well, yeah, part of my delay has been that I wanted to give you a more complete picture. But I think perhaps the best thing to do is to let you know just how you wish it was, and do your own.
Okay.
Well, we feel so helpless. I mean, is there another suggestion that big term, big to term?
I would, you know, at some point, I say this with some reluctance, you know, this crap, I'm kind of getting off the high school board, so quite most of you know at the end of this term, because I've got a business, I'm trying to best get from the debt. And, but if it continued into another year, if the three towns, I think the four towns affected, you know, should explore their legal rights, because it seems to me that taxpayers are impacted.
I'd say hold back the funds or something, to actually get some legitimate accounting, you know?
Bear in mind, the concern I have about that is fiscal shortfall just means that the kids are affected. But I, but I certainly, you know, I certainly think that, and also, you have to be, your town clerk is also the clerk of the, of our school district. So, yeah.
Well, they can't score it away. People start better talking about some charter schools, because this is totally ridiculous.
Well, charter schools, you know, we still have to deal with the state. The fact is, we're doing a reasonable job, actually better than a reasonable job, of educating our kids, particularly COVID, our academic scores aren't what they were this past year because of it, but they're still a whole lot better than anybody around here. And so we're doing, we're educating kids. But I, the back office stuff needs to be cleaned up. I have a lot of confidence that Andy Haas is capable of doing it. I feel more confident by him than I have anybody since Charlie Hannah Harpster, who was on the role superintendent. But we'll have to see.
Do we have a deadline of January 20th for our warnings to begin?
You need to check that, Kim.
No, I've got it right here on my calendar. I think we should, we should, Jack, the 20th deadline to get back to that.
I know Andy and his team are working through Christmas holidays, trying to clean this up. And they didn't make this mess, but they're doing their best. And I know that I'll be over there, because I've been over there every day this week so far. You know, last week, and probably be every day coming. But, so again, you know, I have to have a certain level of hands-off, I can only do it if you have. I've literally been going through stuff, line item by line item. But, you know, it's not like this, like board where you can be involved in more grand rural levels, or there's certain things you can't do, the $20,000 budget.
Okay, well, thank you, Jack, for coming in.
And Jack, you're right, two out of three of my kids got educated, and they did good there. So, I mean, you are correct.
Yeah, I know one of them, and I've got a lot of pride with that.
All right, well, thank you.
You bet. Feel free to comment about it, at any time, if you have questions.
So Highway Court, who's going to give the FEMA recovery status?
I haven't heard anything from P.
FEMA status, that's the status. The status is, it's gone to PA, the public assistance. She is, she has formed the projects based on the information we have given them. And she is, when we are proceeding with the cohorts that we hope to mitigate, to be placed by mitigation, because they didn't wash down the stream, there are mitigation projects. And Ledroad is a completely separate project. What she, we don't know exactly what she wants, because she hasn't finished in all the detail of that work, and she hasn't come back to us. But we expect to, what we expect to happen next is, is Michelle, after the first of the year probably, will be working on the numbers based on, okay, project 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And she's going to then put the cost, and, you know, all the costs that is out there, figure out where all those bills goes, who goes with 1, who goes with 2, who goes 3. And meantime, Katie is doing from the other side, based on our numbers, what those, what the estimate should be, so that she'll have the estimates and the actuals. So we're probably looking at the end of January, maybe beginning of February, before all that's done.
Okay.
John, do you?
That hurt, you're right.
Last meeting, John, you had said that she was going to have the estimates done, but.
There are some questions from her that took Bill a while to get back.
So that's what she's still working on?
And I think Bill has got everything back to her, because she has not said she needs anything else.
She may have the estimates done next week, I don't know, but I'm, it doesn't matter.
I'm just asking, that's what she's still working on.
She would give us estimates, we need the actuals from Michelle. I think we'd rather that she wait till next week, she's behind, and we'd like to take this week off. So if you would get her first of the year, we get along from there.
But isn't, is Katie going to come back down to?
Not unless we want to.
To figure, okay.
We don't really need her at this point.
All right.
Not that I know of, no.
All right, because I know there's some question about how we recorded it, and what we're going to actually use. She was going to look at that again.
Yeah, we returned everything that she needed to her.
Yeah.
Okay, there was a question, I guess, somebody asked a question about administrative work getting paid. That's what's on there.
Well, if you look at the minutes that I sent out to you in August, you directed that. Working on the FEMA would be Danny and myself and John, but you didn't say John would be paid. I'm, we're paid, and you just need to say that, that John should be paid for that work that he's done since, since he was appointed to do it back in August.
Right, well, I assumed it was like, I mean, I get the board's sure, we did that, that there was.
That's what, I think everybody assumed that, but if the minutes do not say, and.
No, I did not know.
I thought it was an in-kind service by John, because he was on the highway committee. Nothing was said about payment.
All this money will come back to you. You get reimbursed for everything that I do, so it's not costing it down one step.
So, John, I went back and listened to that recording of that portion of the meeting. And to your credit, you're the one who brought this topic up to the select board and asked for the authorization to go forward.
Right.
And so I think the only missing piece here is the authorization for you to be paid, which was not clear to me as a new select board member, not clear to Kathy, I don't know to what extent. People who are around, perhaps, I believe you did some work for the town similarly during Irene.
Yeah.
And you were authorized, Danny and you and Bill were also authorized at that time to do that kind of work.
At that time, Bill was not the administrator, so he had to be approved, and Michelle was the same way.
Okay.
And they were approved.
And that's why it was assumed that that's how it was going to be, that's how it was going to happen.
Well, I think that, you know, I agree with Bill in terms of people who are going to get paid, and Kathy too, in terms of just making it real clear whether it's an in-kind contribution or a paid position, I think the minutes should reflect that. I think that's all we're asking for. So do we need these minutes to reflect that?
If Kim were here, Kim asked, Kim would like you to authorize him to be hired to do that work, and I don't remember what we hired in Irene, but that's what I would have figured. It's the same work, if you don't know. But John has a lot of experience, he's way back to when. He's really good at dealing with the PA, and he's really good at getting all the money out of them that we should get. And, and he knows how to go through the system. So it isn't, and he's spent a lot of money, a time at it. So he should be paid for it, and he should be paid well. So I don't know what that should be, but I, I think it was.
How was the hourly rate? Is it an hourly rate, John?
Thirty dollars an hour plus fuel.
And could you just educate us on how that hourly rate was established?
No, I just, I came up with that rate. At that time, I was getting no benefits or nothing else.
That was better than Irene.
That's what we was.
Yeah, so we took the same numbers that were done in Irene.
Okay, the same as Irene.
Now, if the town was not being reimbursed for this, I'm glad we do it for nothing. But it's time-consuming, I spent a lot of time on it, there's a lot of time I spent I haven't even charged for. And so.
No, I don't.
One thing is, he is treated as a contractor, in my prep. He, he, I never knew, I knew it wasn't said in the meeting, but I know he presented the town with an insurance binder. So that is assumed that he is a contractor for that work. That's my take on that. So far as anybody sent a rate, you hired him as a contractor.
I wasn't here, but when I'm here, I don't think anybody has a problem with actually having to do it. If I'm listening to this correctly, he just said the select board was, didn't think that they were informed about that, this is how it was going to be.
I'm not sure.
I think it's just.
It shouldn't have been clearly.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's any more, I don't think it's.
That's my argument.
I don't think it was that someone was informed, I think what happened was, because it was, the same thing was done during Irene, everybody assumed, and it wasn't put in there about compensation, but it was assumed that, I mean, everybody got paid, and you know, that there would be the same thing.
I'm going to talk to you like you're one of my students, you don't assume it's being.
But I was sworn on the board that, during Irene.
No one, no one begrudged.
Let me tell you, this FEMA stuff, I dealt with some of the part of Harvard. It's tough. And everything has to, you know, everything has to be done just right, or you won't get the money, it's as simple as that.
This, I mean, this is, we couldn't have a person that's better qualified to do the job than he's doing than John is in that role. And so it's not anything to do with grudging John, his talent, his pay. It's a matter of process. What is best practice for the select board? When we hire someone, it's be in the minutes, and it's to state that we've done that, we've authorized it. And John would be the first to step up and say that about our select board.
Well, FEMA won't ask you for that exact thing, so.
Exactly.
How do they want to?
I'm happy to move that John be, I make a motion that John be hired, that the select board authorizes the position of John as contractor at $30 per hour for the emergency work he's doing for FEMA, and that's flawed on July 29th.
I might want to say something, just saying that's clarifying maybe minutes happen, because FEMA's definitely going to have.
I'm going to say retroactive, retroactive.
That sounds great. Thank you, Danny.
Any other discussion?
That's $30 plus fuel.
Yeah, that's it was. If there's no other discussion, the motion through, I mean.
I named a second.
Yeah, you have a second.
Oh, second.
Thanks, guys.
And if you have no discussion, all fair to say, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that takes care of that. Kim, do you have anything else that you want to talk about?
Yes, so I was asking you to give a little more detail on what we're doing, and what we've accomplished. So some of the things that need to happen is, oh, first, Don Google came in a week and a half or so ago. He was approached by a landowner down up there, possibly thinking about selling or leasing a piece of land, and they were not, Don was the grafted cares, I believe, that he's on, not grafted cares.
The public association.
Public association. They weren't interested in that, so he gave me the information of this piece of property in town. He didn't know about gravel or a apostle cemetery. It is like 90, almost 94 acres. So I will give that to Bill, and I guess.
Yeah, well, John and I will take the cemetery for the legal.
Yeah, I'll give it.
Where is it located, do you know?
At the end, I don't know.
I mean, approximately.
The end of Fortune 20, beyond where Uz used to own. They logged that like a year and a half, two years ago, that's the parcel.
So it's not Uz's property?
No. But Don has the name on here, his cell phone number.
That goes right through to the, to the, to the, to the, it goes right by Rick Cavell's.
Is there any gravel up there?
I doubt it. And there again, there's a face with fill in the road.
Why'd they want to sell it, do you know?
No, they logged it, they didn't trust or something, I don't know.
Well, is that Patrick come up to us?
Did he give you the name?
Yes.
Is that Patrick's the name?
That name right there.
What's it?
Oh, wait.
A fun doctor.
What's this, oh, Justin Rochelle?
Oh, that's the Rochelle property, yes. I know where that is, because I owned a lot of land up there a little time. And that's.
That's what Don gave me.
That was, that's carved out in the middle of the piece that I own, that now Blake Hill owns, and Craig, who's on the, he owns. And those properties all came together, but there was never a dividing line, there was never a parallel line, because Mike Rochelle's son had, had this piece in there, that Mike, it was Mike's original land.
But that's, that's a piece, there's no number mentioned here.
It's all led walk land. I mean, when I say by led walk, there's no roads that we get.
The path road goes right to it.
Yeah, but not really, because you, you had to go past the Uz's, and you had to go past the Uz's to get to it. Yeah, but not really, 'cause you, you had to go past the uses, and you had to go past the uses to get to it. It doesn't border uses.
It's not led walk.
No, it is, it's a, it's a right away, but I mean, there's no, there's no one twenty-one or Milltown Road or whatever you gotta go on.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, that's all I know about it.
Oh, you're just in Rochelle, yeah, okay.
The other thing is, the other day, as you know, it's Kim and I were mentioning, that the paratime policy that reads eighteen dollars an hour, and then we voted during the flood that truck drivers got twenty-two. You gotta have Bill change that in there, and I think it should read that CEO of truck drivers received a twenty-two. Awesome, just drive in our pickup.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you guys ever found that the other day, I don't play left or right.
We need to, we need to develop a part-time policy, which Kim and I have, and it used to be in the, it used to be that in the policy, there was a definition of all the different types of work for the town, and that was taken out some years ago, I don't know how many years ago, anyway, it's not in there anymore. So we thought that we improve policies because we always talk, we talk about the eighteen. The select board decided the eighteen was the, was the wage for part-timers, and then the change to twenty-two for truck drivers. So we need to do a form of policy, so that we have it in the policy.
Okay.
I wore whole lot of flags out of the cemeteries, and he put them in five, in five-gallon pails, and brought them to the town garage, which is fine to be there, but if we leave them in five-gallon pails, they're gonna get destroyed from, you know, the exhausts and all that, so someone probably on the cemetery committee ought to get something to put them in and seal them up better, so they're in a, I don't know, a plastic tote or something. Right now, there's.
Two pails?
Yeah, two pails that are all you can get in.
What a, a plastic tote about so big?
I mean, at least as long as they are to lay down in there.
Right.
Because if we just put them upstairs away there, by this time next year or next summer when you need them, they're gonna be.
Okay, I'll acquire a plastic tote.
I'll guarantee. You might need two.
Two?
Yeah, there's a lot of flags.
You gotta pump them up, then, essentially.
The garage, I don't know if the building committee wants to do it, or I know in the past, I've called the ones that worked on the garage and it was built, but the fan that removes the humidity, the CO2, all that, is not working with the louver fan. The louvers are opening, but the fan is not kicking on them. The last time they came, they went up, they did something to the fan, a reset or something, but I know I'm not going up there. It's in very deep of the building, and I don't know exactly what they did the last time they were there to make it work, but that is.
Cause wouldn't you know who the company is?
I'd have to look it up. Which, I can't think of the name of the electrician, out of, we're out of rural, did the work and it was built. I'm not saying that they're the ones that you might wanna keep using, 'cause we've had a lot of electrical issues with the building. So you might wanna find a different electrician that will do that stuff. I'd have to look in the book that come with the garage, I can't remember the name.
Black Mountain Mechanical.
Black Mountain Mechanical.
Is that the one that did, Black Mountain Mechanical?
Are you sure that was the, was it the plumber? I did hear a name.
Black Mountain, Black Mountain Mechanical, right, is that the one that's the fan?
Possibly, that is, that is the plumbers, I think it was Tyler was the electrician, right?
Could have been Tyler.
I, I, I would like the town to find somebody different. We've had problems with both the companies on building, when we've had issues since we've had. So, I have had Rob Halleck come and do a few little things, all electricians are very hard to get, do shit a lot. That is in the peak of the building, so it's, it's up there. There's one light out in the high part of the shop that Rob was gonna look at, he has not come back to look at it. It might be good to have, and at the same time, if they're gonna have to get one of the old lift things in there to reach to evolve, so that you're not having to come back with another expense of that buggy. But I know it's, it's in the peak, the highest point of the building.
Who's gonna do this? Who, who, I mean, the building committee, or should we, did you do it, Danny? I mean, I don't, let's.
I don't know.
Hire a person, not, not, change the lights, but how are we gonna get a new mechanical man and a new electrician?
The plumbing, we had use lately, a different company, last year we had problems, and he was really good, and that was D Camp. But he's not a electrician, he's the plumbing, so I don't know who you get for the electrician.
Do you know anybody local?
I mean, Halleck will do it, it's fine, but I don't know whether, how busy he is.
He hasn't come back for a week yet.
And it may be because it's too, it's not in his, with it being in the peak?
I don't, I don't know.
I think it sounds like a building committee project.
I don't like all of this one, as a team.
Plumbing, the electricity, and the news pliers for that, the garage.
Just let Danny take care of it.
Because Danny's got highway stuff to do, and that's building stuff, it sounds to me like.
I don't know who you guys have for like, you know, electricians for here, or whatever, if they can handle it, or.
Well, Halleck has done a lot of the stuff here, right?
Yes.
Well, Gus.
What we need to make sure is whoever does it is licensed, 'cause I'm just not sure who's the master of electricity and is supposed to be doing this stuff, but that's what we do. I'll look into it, 'cause there's no sense of getting the building committee, 'cause they're gonna go there and say, oh yeah, there is a van, and they're not gonna go, what, you're gonna need a guy that come there, who's gonna say, this is what needs.
You need to find a new electrician, a new, a new mechanical guy, or use the same mechanical guy, either one.
I will, I will.
Name's about electrician on this, this is definitely a lot of salt.
I can get you some names, too, though.
Okay, I'll keep you informed, but I don't know that we need to go down there and meet, I mean, you guys can, if you want.
We have just started, pretty much, I already started on the paperwork, but started actually physically doing some of the passive risk management report that was issued four months ago during the flood, that we had not done, and that was of all the little flings in the shop, and then the few buildings, the weight ladders restored, fuel, stuff like that. I talked to Bill a little bit today about the fire alarm, workplace posters, and I think one other thing on the list was the hazard communication program that we have, something that needs to be created. So, fat fires, stuff in the building, it is, within a couple of days, we'll have that stuff done, you know, the way the the drill process is secure, and the ladders, that stuff is simplified.
Let me just, so I've talked to Countryside.
Yeah.
They're gonna call and set up appointment to look at our fire, our fire alarm in one of the garage, and then I put it on the calendar for things that need to be done. At the end of December every year, call Countryside, or call and have it inspected, because the one at the garage hasn't been inspected since two thousand nineteen, and ours hasn't been inspected since two thousand and seventeen. So, we need.
They do fire services too, don't they?
No.
Who does the fire services?
That's the travelers comes to do it.
No, different ones, there's no issues.
Well, they, okay.
Some of them, some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In the mix of all that, we've been dealing with snowstorms and dirt and trucks. You were receiving a bill for a digger's truck on Santa Parks that caught and broke the shaft off in the main gearbox. That is already obsolete on a three-year-old truck, so we had to do a complete change on the gearbox. I don't know what the bill is, the computers were down the day I developed it, so. But everything is pretty much back together, it's been working on some plows in this last storm. I was asked today about a Fisher nine-foot Fisher snowplow that the town owns that came on their pickup, two thousand nineteen pickup, that we have never used. We will use the head gear and put the plow that we had before that on it, that is set up for soft roads, if the town was interested in selling that plow. I have no problem if the town wants to sell it, it's been setting up on one of the old bridges in the cockpit for, since two thousand nineteen. I think it might have got maybe a mile of snowplowing put on, and we first got it to be changed, but I know the town, you can't just sell it, I think it has to be like a bid or something. It has to be open to the public about selling decent amount of equipment. You can look into that, but I think as long as it says that they're selling just a Fisher nine-foot plow blade, there's no head gear, nothing that goes with it, for a minimum of a thousand dollar bid, that being the minimum bid, I have no problem with seeing it go away.
So can you put down the grafted news bill? It's coming out soon?
Probably.
That would save some money. And just give, you know, what we need to do is let the actual year and make and model.
Yeah, I don't know if the plows actually have a bid number on them, or, I can look and see that's on it, but it ain't frozen. Snow on it, but it's up there, but I don't, I don't appreciate town for using that. We use a, we use a polyplow with a rubber cut edge on it, on the pickup, perfect to use for like the snowstorm we had Saturday.
Total credit money was, when you bought that, there was no credit money involved in that?
No, it was all that, that's our money.
You're gonna use it, but sell it?
No, I would, I would mail out to all the people that we know that are in the snowplow business, and then put it to paper ball.
Okay. We're just gonna ask for a bid, not a price?
I think you got.
Minimum of a thousand.
Minimum, yeah, it has to be over, you know, a thousand or more.
Okay.
Then you're not gonna accept something less than that, I mean, it's well worth a thousand dollars, but we just let it sit there and rot away. You know, the plows aren't like the old trucks, where you just, the head gear stays on the truck and you change the plow. How a head gear is attached to the plows, it's not something that you easily switch back and forth, and we haven't switched it since the last truck.
What kind of, what kind of plow was it?
I'm actually sorry, that plow was actually older than the two thousand nineteen. That came on the first pickup we bought. We did not buy any head gear with this pickup.
What kind of plow was it?
It's a Fisher, straight, I gotta check on it, I think it's a nine-foot plow.
So without the head gear on it, it still works a thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Is anybody else, Danny?
Danny, I, I was on, checking on the, getting a contractor to do the yellow line on the new.
I called them after the last meeting, and I've called them two, three times since, and they spoke, never called me back.
That's over now, you can smell it, they're not gonna do it anymore.
I think we're done this spring.
I like that, right?
Yeah, no, no, they never, they never called back, I called them, not for the whole, that's the biggest problem.
Okay, thanks for trying.
I know the last meeting, we had the guardrails on there, and that price, I can't remember exactly what Kim said it was, but it ended up coming in under.
Fifty-five, I think, fifty-five hundred.
Steel came in under?
No, the, the whole job was like five thousand, and then they had to add the flaggers, and then they ended up using a couple pieces of the air rail, and it still came in right on that, I think it was like fifty-three something.
I'm seeing these turtle prices are oddly real right now.
Yeah.
Okay, if nothing else, Danny, Kim, is Kim on, or is any, you need to, Kim's on the agenda, but do you know of anything, Bill, that you need, she wants you to talk about? I don't.
No, let me think.
If I talked to her today, she'd have said any of them.
What about the budget?
The only thing that I could say that, if anybody owes her a, a report for the town report, that's the only thing I could think of that, that. They need, they need to consider, pardon me?
Did she mention my name specifically?
No, but, there's only three, there's only three report reports that need to be done, so.
Minister Chair, should we, go ahead, what about the budget item number eight? Is that something Kim was planning to?
No, no, that's something that was requested, but you know, on the, on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
Time out, what?
Number eight?
Number eight.
Number eight, you guys had to do a budget discussion tonight.
Yeah, but not now, when it gets there, we do it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I just wondered if Kim was.
No, I'm nothing to do with Kim.
Okay.
Okay, all right, personnel policy. The personnel reviews for section thirteen of the policy.
Section thirteen of the policy has to do with written evaluation.
Correct, that's good.
Okay, and that's, and I, I wanted that on there because as, I'm, I'm in charge of the HR paperwork, and I have not seen any reviews of, of any employee as is required by the policy. And they need to be included till we, put them in the cabinet, so they'll be there for future purposes. I get, and if, if it's just that, yes, that will get done in, in a time, that's, I just want some action on it to make sure everybody understands. We need written reviews.
And let me explain how it's, how it's been done for the last three or four years. We have a form, it was duly approved by the select board, I'm not sure how many years ago, three, four, five years ago. We use that form, when I did it with Alan, Alan did one of the employee, I did one, and then Alan and I met, and then we met with the employee, and we discussed what we thought, what he, that he thought, or she, well, it's only he's. And, and then it was signed off, and that's the end of it, and then it goes in the file. So, it's a very simple process, the forms are downstairs, you just do them.
Do we have any written reviews?
So Kathy, did you wanna?
Yeah, I think last week, we, we interviewed Danny and Bill. Basically went over their job description, they talked, each of them separately talked about what they do. We handed them the sheet, goals that they can get back to us, and we still have to meet again, so we're not done. We're in the process and following the policy, which, however, we have some changes in that policy.
But we need, we need to use the forms that we have in the select board office.
So, yeah, so we have that, Joe, this is the form that has been used previously.
Right, and that's.
And, and it, Kathy and I will definitely go ahead and fill this out, so that it can be included in the, in the personnel file. When you look at it in detail, it does have some items on it that, seeing at our, at the level of the two employees who report directly to the select board, namely Danny and Bill.
I think there are two forms, there are two. One was, one was geared for administrator, I think one was geared for the employee, is that correct?
No, no, I, I went over all the forms appraisal today, and looked in the, and looked in the, looked in the files, and saw that the, the same form was used for everyone. The, the, the form that Kathy and I would like to propose that we adopt, and we can certainly do this in addition to the current form, is one that gets us to talk to the employees a little more about their responsibilities and their goals, and it also gives us an opportunity to seek inner feedback about how they're doing toward those goals. Danny has submitted his goal report to Kathy and me, and he's also distributed to Mike and to Dave, and as far as I know, Mike's already submitted his, and the only one we haven't received is Phil's.
The only, the only thing that I have.
I have it done, but I haven't given it to them.
Okay, but the only thing that I have, Suzanne, it's all well and good to have a new policy, but it's not been approved by. Okay, but the only thing that I have Suzanne, it's all well and good to have a new policy, but it's not been approved by the Select Board.
No.
And it had, it has to be approved and voted by the board before it can be used. I mean, that's what it is. We spent a considerable amount of time with Alan, um, developing the one we have. It, it probably had three or four meetings and, so it's okay, but it has to be, those forms have to be approved before they can be used.
So, Joe, that's fine, I, 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 I read you the word, word for word, that the forms evaluation section of the current policy.
It's nothing to do with that, that this, if you're gonna use the form, it has to be approved by the five members of the board.
We are in the process of the personnel policy review.
But you're using the policy, you used it before it even was approved, and that's not right. You, you, you have implemented something that the board has not approved. I'm not saying it's a bad one, I'm not saying it's a good one, I'm saying it's not the policy of the board.
You sound angry.
I'm not angry, it's, 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 it's the way it's supposed to be. I mean, you just can't create forms and then use them and the five of us or the rest of us don't see it, that's what I'm saying.
We're very happy.
It's a policy.
If, if you'd like to, the, the fact is that it says, the, uh, in such a, the current policy says, in such a manner as the Select Board or the Select Board's authorized representative, mainly the Personnel Committee, deems reasonable. So Kathy and I deemed this reasonable to structure a conversation with the employees using this form. And if, just like we did a few minutes ago, if we need to go back and retroactively approve the form, we'll certainly be willing to do that. But this was all done in good faith and, um, that's all I'm gonna say. We're definitely, I mean, um, to be on the receiving end of that kind of, uh, what sounded like anger to me about this.
It's not anger, it's, 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 it's a violation of what the board's policy has been. We all approve forms, regulations, ordinances, not after the fact. And we should get the forms, we should have discussion about it, that's my only anger about it. Because it's not, it's not in, in keeping with what we do as a board. Now, if the board wants to change it, so be it. They can, they can approve anything they want, but it's not the proper procedure. That's, that's my only, and if we don't have the proper procedure in this board, then things are gonna get out of hand. That's all I'm saying.
And what do you think of the work of the Personnel Committee so far?
I have nothing, I, I have no comment on the Personnel Committee. Uh, whether you do it, that's your business, I, 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 how can I comment? I'm not part of the Personnel Committee, I'm only talking about the forms, that's all.
Well, we, we have.
If you wanna have worksheets and you wanna use your own worksheets, that's particularly fine. But the form, the final form that one, that you, with the employee, the one the employee signs, the one that goes here, has to be the form that's approved that's in the files. Because those forms have been in there now for a number of years and there's, there's a continuity with those forms. You can look back and see the same question was answered in 2019, in 2020, in 2021. When you have different forms, you can't do that.
Suzanne, can I ask you a question? Mike and Dave and Danny had their reviews. Is there a written review?
No, we, as Kathy mentioned, John, we have not finished, we have received their input, but we have not had our final discussion with them. So we haven't just signed anything. And now what I'm learning, and I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be made very clear that Kathy and I are new on the Personnel Committee, that we have not done an egregious act here. We are very willing to cooperate and use the form that this Select Board has previously approved for the final copy that goes into the personnel file.
Well, I'm just curious if a written one had been.
Yeah.
Written up on those three because they have been reviewed.
Absolutely, that will definitely happen.
So how do we wanna handle this?
Pardon me?
What are we, are we gonna look at the form or are you gonna use the other one? How, what is the board's pleasure to proceed?
So I think what we were just asked to do, but maybe I misunderstood, is have this form be the one that we fill out and sign, and this one will go into the personnel file. And we can do that when we have our second meeting with the employees. We'll have it with Danny and Bill, Danny can have it with Mike and Dave. We'll use this form now that we understand how important it is to do that, for this to go into the employee file. But I think we will continue, I'm sorry Kathy, go ahead.
But I think what Joe's saying, this term line use has to be approved.
Yeah, the form, we'll consider that a worksheet for now, and if we decide we want it to be an approved form, Kathy and I will discuss that and we'll bring it.
Right, add it later, me.
We'll bring it to the Select.
I'm not saying you shouldn't use it, you should or shouldn't. If you wanna change the form, by all means, let's change it, but let's have it submitted, give it to Bill, let Bill do it. And we can have a, an agenda on it and we can decide.
That sounds fine.
How, maybe, maybe there are suggestions to approve what you have done, I don't, I have no idea.
Of course, of course.
But you have to use the same one.
I'm not arguing at all, do you hear me arguing? I am not.
I'm not arguing, I just wanna make sure that it's all mistaken.
So the form that I filled out, are you gonna, I'm gonna do a different one now?
Well, what we'll do, Danny, is when we come and meet with you now that we understand this need of the Select Board, when we come and meet with you, we'll bring the other form with us and we'll take care of it then.
Suzanne, the only reason I bring it up was the last meeting, a recommendation came from the Personnel Committee on what was to be given to the employees. And that was based on a verbal, uh, review. You know, I heard parts of that verbal review, I'd just like to see the written review of each employee so I can.
Yeah, I understand. So you're saying about the increases?
No, everything. You, what, you recommend, yeah, you recommended increases, that's, yes.
Okay. So it was our understanding, John, that the increase was based on a cost of living increase. And that the practice of the town has been to offer cost of living increases to our employees. And, um, so what happened in the meetings we had on December ninth is we notified Danny and, and Bill that we were gonna recommend a five point nine percent increase based on the COLA, the COLA, cost of living increase. So that's what happened.
But there was under, this, beyond the five point nine.
Yes.
And I, I have nothing against it, except I'd like to see the written review so I could go over it.
Okay.
Why, why, why that happened.
Okay.
That, that's all, I'm not complaining, I know what you're doing.
Okay, okay, that sounds good, that sounds good.
Okay, now what about the next one, personal power amendments including section forty-eight?
So, um, you each received a package on Friday that had in it that Danny and you and Mike and, and Dave have copies of these all week.
Did you get the regular one that I also did?
It was on the table, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, did you guys have?
Okay, and so you have, um, did anybody need an extra copy? So let me just go to that.
Actually Suzanne, you have an extra one, I'm not sure which one I have, I have so many things, I don't remember which.
Well, Joe, it's interesting because I did leave it in your department Friday.
Oh, I know.
And we said three thirty today, it was still there.
Was it still there?
Yeah.
I didn't even pick it up, I'm sorry.
Okay, so in this packet, you'll see that we have four items. One is the action item list that we had from the last twelve-six Select Board meeting. And then we have, the second item is a, an option for the Select Board's consideration of comp time without replenishment. And then we have a draft of a grievance process that we were asked to come up with at the last meeting. And then we have the revised version of the personnel policy. And, um, I'd like to go over that with you just in terms of the revisions that we made since the last meeting, and these we were asked to make, and I just wanna make sure that you're aware that we have done so. So we're following the action item list and we are looking at the personnel policy. So Kathy, can I just step through these and you'll comment?
Yeah, I think, which one on our page?
Okay, so the first one is on page three, section one. And on these, um, copies, I have highlighted the areas where we have made changes since the last meeting, so they're easy for you to pick up. The first action we had was to add sections twenty-nine and thirty to Addendum B, which is, uh, the elected official signed Addendum B, that's covered in sections eighteen through twenty-seven, twenty-nine through thirty. We also did that on page three, section two, and wherever it appeared. Now returning to page five, section seven, hours of service. There was a lot of discussion in our last meeting about hours of service. So we revised the wording just a bit to be, hours of service for persons employed at town hall or other town offices shall be forty hours with thirty minutes paid time allowed for lunch. And this is the operative phrase, unless otherwise set by an action of the Select Board. So both of those were changes that were recommended, that's action two and three. And then we were also asked to add regular hours for Highway Department are six AM to two PM, Monday through Friday. The next change we were asked to make is in section thirteen, page eight. And, um, relative to the discussion we just had about performance evaluation. Um, the original version of this proposed policy had, uh, quarterly reviews provided. We got some feedback about this and also I, I wanna point out that I, I did a briefing with Rich on this policy just to bring him up to speed. And so with that input, we changed the wording from quarterly reviews to interim feedback provided. Uh, so it's not to lock the, anyone into a quarterly, um, a quarterly meeting and also not to call it a review, which can get confused with the annual review, but rather to call it feedback that gives us an opportunity to communicate with employees on a more frequent basis, how they're doing against their goals and how they're doing in their performance. And then, as you'll note, in the proposed policy, it's actually clearer than in the current policy, exactly what Joe raised as a concern and what John is also looking for. The Select Board and the signed copy will become part of the employee's personnel file. The next section is section thirteen, uh, I'm sorry, is section twenty-three, page seventeen. This is the overtime and compensatory time off section. And we had discussion, uh, enough at the twelve-six meeting that we decided to strike the words in one calendar year and strike the sentences, earned comp time must be used or paid by the end of the calendar year, no carryover. It didn't work in that particular place on page seventeen because this proposed policy provides employees the opportunity to replenish their comp time and not be paid cash overtime. So that wording about end of calendar year and no carryover actually appears after, uh, on the top of page eighteen in a more appropriate place. An employee must choose to be paid overtime or replenish comp time in any given period during a calendar year. The balance of earned comp time will be paid at the end of the calendar year, no carryover. That is really the only change that Kathy and I are recommending in this proposed policy to the current policy. Now later on tonight, we're gonna look at an option that has no replenishment, but this is the recommendation that we made. Okay, and then in sections twenty-nine and thirty on pages, um, yeah, on page nineteen, uh, this is section twenty-nine. Uh, we changed the wording in accordance with the discussion we had at the meeting on twelve-six. Any employee who wishes to report harassment should file a complaint with any member of the Town and Craft and Select Board. So we changed that on, in, um, section twenty-nine and in section thirty, page twenty-one. Any member of the Town and Craft and Select Board. Okay. We had a couple of other things pop up during that interim time and one was from our contact at the LCT who encouraged us to, on page twenty-three, strike the sentence, the town may not utilize this termination process, but may take whatever action it deems necessary to address the issue at hand. The LCT is reconsidering, um, this wording in this particular section, employee termination process. And their best practice now is to delete that thing. Okay, and so with that, it's a summary of the changes that the Personnel Committee, based on listening to the Select Board and, uh, from the last meeting. Are there any questions or edits or comments about that?
We're gonna do a draft of the, uh, Addendum C grievance process.
Yeah.
So we got all the steps, is that in our packet?
Yes.
For sure.
So now you can just, to Kathy's point, if you just turn to this draft of the grievance process, this is a proposed addendum to the, um, to the personnel policy, it would become Addendum C. And it outlines, uh, through the steps associated with the grievance process. This was a recommendation we got from the twelve-six meeting. We consulted with our HR person at Passit and we have developed this grievance process.
And the reason we put the steps in is that oftentimes, I'm not gonna say oftentimes, there could be an occasion where an employee would come to the Select Board member with either harassment or discrimination or sexual harassment. And they say listens, but they don't follow any of the steps. Or they'll say, well, I, I think I've decided it's not worth bothering. So that's why we wanted to put the steps down.
So this is, when, when we changed that wording to make ring a complaint to any member of the Select Board, this is what the Select Board would be committing itself to if you are the recipient, uh, if any of us is a recipient of one of these complaints.
Well, I'd like to have an explanation on number two. I understand the first part of it, but are you, are you saying that each of the Select Board member has to go on the online anti-harassment training?
Yes. So this is a recommendation from the LCT. This is, helps all of us understand what it means to be harassed and what the, uh, steps are if you are hearing about this, how you listen to it, how you report. you are hearing about this, how you listen to it, how you report it. And this training is provided online by the LCT, so there is no, you know, class that we have to attend, but it would be an online training course that takes between 30 minutes and one hour for each member of the Select Board to participate in. It is a big responsibility to be the recipient of an harassment complaint, and this ensures that each person has common knowledge about what that means and how to handle it.
Rich, did you take this course at school?
Yeah, we got it too.
I've been through so many of these, I can't keep these straight, but I think so. I don't think it was too dark in the wire car.
Okay. So this is, so what we'll be asking approval for is the policy with the Addendum C for the grievance policy. And now we're going to turn to what John asked us to look into, which is the draft comp time without replenishment. So you have a page on that in your packet, and it's highlighting what the change would I just want to point out once again that comp time is a very meaningful and important benefit to our employees, and that we should consider any change in that context. Employees may earn comp time up to a maximum balance of 80 hours in one calendar year. Earned comp time must be used or paid by the end of the calendar year, no carryover. Within any single pay period, an employee who reaches a maximum balance of 80 hours of earned comp time will be paid overtime compensation for any additional overtime hours. I just want to make a couple of comments and then turn this over to for your discussion. Comp time is earned when our employees work overtime. They are working to earn their comp time. When they convert overtime to comp time, overtime hours worked to comp time, they earn comp time at the overtime rate, which is 1.5 times. Once they have accumulated that earned comp time at the 1.5 times rate, they then multiply that by their regular rate to get the pay. 1.5 is calculated into the hours accrued. The second point I want to make is this. In our current policy, we provide for replenishment. It is administered currently using replenishment. What the proposed policy does is codify what actually occurs and has occurred since 2018 and 2019, when the previous Select Board approved this policy. And what this means is that at the employee's choice, when they work overtime and they accrue comp time, they can accrue comp time by working overtime, and then they can get paid in comp time until they reach that 80-hour maximum. And then, as they earn either, then they cannot take any more comp time paid until they earn more comp time. So they earn more comp time, and then they can take more comp time paid, so that it keeps fluctuating from 80 hours, and then you use that up, and then you earn more, and then you can use that up. And that's why you see on the warrants that we sign, the compensation time accrued is greater than 80 hours. In this proposal, without replenishment, overtime will be converted to comp time to a maximum of 80 hours, and then from that point on, there's no more replenishment. You can use it, you can take time off and be paid in comp time, but once they get to 80 hours, that's done, and you have to accept the cash overtime. The reason comp time was allowed by the Federal Labor Standards Act for public sector institutions own was to alleviate the high cost of overtime and to substitute time off as an en lude of overtime pay. So with that said, John, since you wanted us to look at this policy, maybe you'd like to kick off our discussion about it?
Well, I think you just explained it, because what I would like to see, I just can't, you have, most employees have four weeks vacation, two more weeks of comp time, sick days, I don't remember whether, how many there are, but when can we work? I mean, there's quite a lot of things that have to be done, and I would think that this is a pretty good balance of time that they can have off during the summertime, but you can't take it during the winter. So I just cannot see extending that 80 hours to 170, 180, in some cases, what has been done. So that is my reasoning. I don't know of anybody else.
I agree with John.
May I ask, what kind of work do you feel is not being done because of time off?
Well, I think there's a lot of work that gets put off, that could be done, you know, more work, you know, could be done. The grants have reached a point where, you know, I don't think you can do any more than because of how to give more grants. I think there are a lot of times where you can't really do things on the road because there's only one of you, two of you, or one of you, so I did three, because somebody's taking that time off. Don't you think that is enough time off during the year?
Well, I just started commenting over and over that work isn't being done, and he's thinking more work now. I'm just curious to what work is being felt that wasn't being done. The Highway Group does more things now than they have ever done in the past, so I just wanted to know what was being felt that was not being done.
Well, the moment didn't finish, there's one.
Day not finished, two passes, almost one every day. Got done.
Well, last I looked up Turner Hill, it wasn't done.
You went up Turner Hill?
I went up Turner Hill.
But you have to think that that was something that the Highway Group never used to do. It was always.
I only do one pass up Turner Hill until I get to the top, because I cannot move out without.
I just think that plenty of time off during the year.
I just want to comment on plenty of time off. In 2002, the Personnel Policy instituted comp time, and it was for overtime, what they called actually worked. In 2016, holiday pay was added to the calculation of comp time for overtime, calculation of overtime for the purpose of using it as comp time. In 2018, the definition was expanded to include sick leave, vacations, comp time itself, and paid holidays taken during the same work week shall be counted as time worked for the purpose of computing overtime. When our employees fill out their time sheets and they count sick leave, vacations, comp time, and paid holidays to calculate their overtime, they are following our policy.
As far as comp time, and a little bit I'm familiar with it, but I guess I am fairly familiar with it. When you calculate your 40 hours, every place I'm familiar with, the only exception is if it's like holiday, one of the major holidays came up, the five, Christmas, whatever. I will say, I'm not familiar with these guys, but these guys specifically, their industry does, this may be the norm, I'm not sure, but I've actually never experienced that policy before, that you can take, say, three sick days in a row, then still be eligible for overtime after that. I've never seen that, but I'm not saying the industry doesn't bear that, I really don't know. I guess my question would be, during the summer, just to throw out a scenario, I mean, Danny has responsibilities that he has. If he can't fulfill that responsibility because someone asked for the time off, I'm assuming he says, "I'm sorry, so-and-so, you can't have next week off because we have to do X, Y, Z." If the jobs are getting done, and if the policy is historic, and it's going to lead bad failings, I guess the bottom line is, are we satisfied with what's happening during the summer? I guess that really cuts through the chase, and if we are happy with what's happening during the summer, I guess we move forward. If we're not happy with what's happening during the summer, I mean, during the winter, that's a no grant. At the stone of ground, you guys have to be out there, and that's, yeah, but.
That's why you see a lot of time in the summer. If it's storming, it doesn't matter if you wanted the day off or not, you have to be at work.
That's kind of the incident, yeah.
The time is always, there's very little time, vacation, comp time, or anything, that is used in the winter months. Now, I'm going to send a message, a season that I'm planning to date off Thursday this week, but if it storms.
Yeah, for sure.
It's, you know, it's too bad, I gotta come in. Now, it's always been in the summer, you know, and I've said this before, that we were asked to schedule our time off. So if I schedule time off in the summer, and it storms, am I expected to come in? I canceled vacations this summer twice. I've done it during our reading to be here at my job, but we are limited to when we can use our vacation. And I've said many times that if I'm going to be forced to schedule a vacation time in advance, that I'm not, I'm going to stop canceling my vacations, you know? I've come close to not getting refunds back from places because it's so tight, where you have to explain to them so you get it back. If they're going to be pushed to take the schedule with them, I'm going to say, "Well, I'm sorry, I scheduled it, and I'm gone."
Well, I think like any relationship in business, I'm going to ask the work of both parties always doesn't work. I mean, that really is the bottom line. I just, when I was reading through this, the only viral hangup was, I almost couldn't believe what I was reading, that you could, calcically, in the process of the vacation time, the sick times, who arrive at that? I mean, where I come from, I mean, you work your 40 hours, and you are eligible for overtime after that, and that's it. But I haven't been around long enough to say, or paying attention long enough to what goes on in town, to say, "I agree with the policy or not," because I honestly don't know. I mean, if we have no complaints that the work is not getting done, then I think that's a complaint. But if we think the work's getting done, I don't know what, really what to say about it.
I mean, obviously, there was a, when the definition of how to calculate overtime include these other, these other forms of being away from work, there would have been a ramification of that in terms of how much time could be used in any given week to reach 40 hours, so then you'd have overtime. And I'm just wondering, Bill mentioned in the minutes, in today's minutes, that he and Robin wrote the 2018 policy, and he shared with Kathy and me the notes that he and Robin had had discussion, and it reminded me that we had these notes as part of our interview with Bill, and it says, Robin asked the question, "Why count time off sick leave, vacation, holiday, as work when figuring overtime?" And the simple answer was, because the Personnel Committee wants it that way. And then it went on to describe the fairness issues that had to do with using these various times off. But the simple answer was, because the Personnel Committee wants it that way. So Joe, I think you were on the Personnel Committee at that time, can you shed some light on the question that's being raised about how sick leave, sick leave, vacation, and holiday, as well as comp time, work into the calculation?
I can't, I don't remember, to be honest with you, I don't. I know, I know it was discussed, and I don't know why it was changed, or, I just don't, I can't remember.
The only other thing that stuck out, Kathy, too, is what a nightmare must be figuring all this stuff up.
Oh, my goodness, Eric, the show. It can't be.
The fairness issue is this. I'm giving you back my comp time. So, so instead of taking eight hours of pay, I'm giving you back eight hours. Why is that not working? Why isn't it the same working? You're not taking any sweat off your brow, you don't need a break, but you are using that time, and you don't know, you don't know when you're going to be called back in after, during that week. So if you use comp time on Friday, and then something happens, and you've got to work Saturday, you're not going to pay him overtime to work Saturday?
No, you have to pay.
Okay. That's what it's there for. That's what it's there for. Fourth of July week is a short week. So, fourth of July week, and I take Tuesday off too, but then I've got to come back, back work, Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, so I only get a 40-hour week because I have to work Saturday and Sunday? No, I gave you back Monday and Tuesday.
Well, I.
And so, just out of fairness, that's why, that's why I suggested that it be changed to include it. I couldn't understand why you would not, not include it. I get, I get it, it's a great benefit, I get it that it's a great benefit, but if you're going to give them time off of being comp time, why is that not comp time? I don't understand. You can't, you cannot rationally explain not counting a day off for being sick, or a day off because you took a holiday, from a day at work. You cannot rationally explain it, because they're giving you back, if they're getting $20 an hour, they're giving you back $160, $160, and then they're making them work two more days.
I guess, like I said, well, that's my frame of reference, it's just what I know. And during the work week, except for maybe the holiday, you put in your 40 before you get the overtime. And like I say, again, I'm not saying these guys are right or wrong, and maybe that's what the industry is, I can just say what my frame of reference is from.
Well, I don't know, and exactly, and Michelle Dole talks about her husband, supervisor that waited, he takes Friday off because he's stressed, but he has to go back in on Saturday, they don't, they don't pay him overtime on Saturday, he is just putting in his 40 hours. I don't know. And there's nothing, there's nothing magic about it. It's just that that's the way I felt when we were discussing, and that's what I told Robin, and Robin agreed with me, so.
Yeah, and actually, now that Bill mentioned that, my mind gets.
Triggered, yeah.
And I think we had that discussion exactly, of, because of the situation of the employees that we had, and what their work is to do. And I think that's why it was put in there.
So if that's the reason why it was put in there, I think we have to somehow resolve this dilemma that we have given employees a benefit that we just went over the rationale for back in 2018. If we agree that that's the right benefit we want to provide our employees in terms of defining how overtime is computed, then we can't, on the other hand, say that they're not working enough to get things done, they're not enough hours to work to get things done, because that could have been, or should have been, a consideration at the time of adopting this definition. And it's also, I think, a question, to what extent people have received feedback that the work is not getting done. And that relates to the performance evaluation that we just talked about. There needs to be feedback. So to my mind, the Select Board has this dilemma. The reason? The reason there may not be enough time to work is because of the very policy that we have in place.
I don't know enough information to make an intelligent opinion. Because I've been around here for a month, for one, or three, for one thing. I mean, you guys often get complaints that this isn't getting done or that, I...
Yeah, I have.
Yeah?
Well, just remember though, whatever happens here, this, we do not have to approve this tonight.
No, no.
This is, this is not, evaluations have to get done for the budget and various other things. But this doesn't have to, this is something that we can sleep on and discuss. This is not, there's no deadline here.
Well, there is a deadline in terms of, at the end of the calendar year, we go into another paid year and we need to make a decision for that. Where we're gonna, whether we're gonna have replenishment or not, Joe. We do have, we don't have to do anything tonight, but we do have to do any, something before the end of the calendar.
Well, we gotta remember that, yeah, the calendar year, not the, not the fiscal.
This, this particular year is when the, when, at the end of the year is when the comp time resets to zero and we're either gonna have a replenishment policy or we're not. And...
Well, since there are no more meetings here, you have to...
No, there will be one more meeting. There is another meeting of the Select Board, isn't there? Oh, no, there's just one more paid period.
On January 3rd.
3rd is the last, just the next meeting.
I always think whenever, maybe not so, whatever it happened to be, but what's our competition doing?
So the VLCT people say that we have what's known as a generous definition of how to compute overtime. That more typically, what's used to define overtime are vacations and paid holidays. Because sick leave and compensatory time are already a benefit. That it's adding two more benefits to calculate another benefit, you know what I'm saying? So sick leave and compensatory time would be less likely to be in other definitions of how to compute overtime. But for the reasons that Joe and Bill just stated, we have it in our policy.
So what's typically done around the area of some of these small towns, would that be a reasonable compromise for everybody?
Well, we haven't done the analysis about what, what difference that would mean. I mean, I, I did, with Kim's help, I did do an analysis of what it would mean, a financial impact on our overtime budget not to replenish, and I just wanted to share that with you. Kim and I just finished this up this afternoon. Okay. So this is, at the top line, you'll see, this is an illustration of the impact of comp time without replenishment on overtime pay. This is not a real calculation, it is, uses data from the check stubs of our employees as of 12/17/21. But it is an illustration of how no replenishment would work. And so you'll see in the yellow highlighting that the impact of total overtime without replenishment at 80 hours is an overtime cost to the town of about $19,000. And if you look at the way things are currently done with replenishment, the overtime, the dollars of overtime are about $16,000 plus about $3,000 over on the left-hand side because obviously the hours of comp time paid would be less at 80 than it is when you have the replenishment factor. So the fact is that it's about a wash, really. Limiting the comp time to 80 hours or leaving the replenishment factor. So it only means that with the numbers working out about the same for both approaches, I mean, the thing the Select Board needs to then, we need to think about is do we want to take a step toward making our comp time policy more conservative, more, and limit the amount of comp time to 80 hours to here? Or do we want to leave it like it is and not take any step?
As far as all of the bookwork goes, limit it to 80 hours, does it save on the administrative?
Oh my goodness, yes, that's an excellent point, Rich. The administration of the replenishment is very complex. I mean, Michelle does it like a science, she, right? But it is very complex administratively.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, employees speak up. Basically, they don't, the only thing moved is extra time off, but you gain it in pay.
Correct.
Yeah. So the downside is you have, you have less off time, but you get more pay.
Yeah, I'd rather have the off time than the pay.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to point is that, that's, I think, what the employees would rather take the time off to do their second jobs or time off to do other things, rather than the money. I, I mean, I think that's, that's what it boils down to, if you wanna take all this other type of stuff. And the harder the matter is, 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 is that's what it means. Because they don't, they don't lose anything. We're not taking away a benefit in reality, but the benefit is for them that you could have an extra day to go fishing or work outside or whatever you want to do.
Or wait on vacation for three days or whatever, you know, that's what I did last year, I took every Friday off.
Right.
The, as I said at the very beginning, Joe, you're absolutely arcing right back. This is a very important and meaningful benefit to our employees. And comp time off is something that they value almost more than money.
Well, you have, you have three employees here, one who doesn't take comp time and the other ones do.
Well, Mike takes less comp time than...
Well, I mean, you, well, Mike takes the overtime, basically.
And my change.
But that means that, that has been the way it has been.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think that's the crux of the decision. I don't know, John, how you're thinking about it now that you've, now we've entered this discussion and we've listened to the different points of view. Where are you coming out with it?
I don't know, I think I'm coming out on the old one that wants this. So I just don't know what you have to discuss it anymore.
Well, as John says, we don't need to make a decision.
I'm, I'm kind of on the fence because I thought, I thought there would be a savings or a more cost of the time, or a save, but I wasn't sure. But actually, monetarily, there is, there is no benefit.
It's pretty much a loss.
Really. The question is, the, the question comes down is that, then that's more days off, which is fine. Does that have an influence upon performance and doing jobs that we need to do that can't be done because you'd have an additional five or six or seven or 10 days off, whatever the case may be? That's where it comes down.
And, but I think there are two other points. The other point to add to yours is our number one, richest point about administration. We are spending a lot of time administering a policy that includes replenishment. And the other is, if Kim were here, is she online?
Yeah.
I think that based on the conversations I've had with her, what we're trying to do here is find a balance between what's agreeable to the taxpayers and what's agreeable to our employees. And so I can see the point, I can see John's point and I can see Kim's point of taking a step in the direction of drawing back our comp time a little bit in order to make it not such an eye-copping policy as Rich pointed out it is when you read it for the first time. I mean, we could increase the comp time paid to 120 hours and still have it a flat. We could, we could do that and we might actually compromise between having a replenishment policy the way it is right now and having it fixed, but at a slightly higher rate, like 120.
I wanna say rocking game, we could build 120 hours of comp time.
With no replenishment? Mm-hmm, with no replenishment, we could go up to 120 with no replenishment. I mean, I'm, I'm throwing that out there as an option, just kind of compromise between the two, the balance that we're striking, trying to strike.
You guys are trying to say, go to 120, from 80 to 120?
Uh-huh, still have it fixed, but go from 80 to 120.
Why not go to 100 then, why 120?
It's another work week, 80 plus 40.
Then it's packed with that, you can go over it.
I mean, I'd, I'd be amenable to that. I mean, how about you, Kathy?
Yeah.
How, how would you guys do?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what is the town?
How would you guys feel about it?
I think you guys is a deposit.
You like the way it is?
I like the way it is. It gives me the choice whether I wanna take in pay or time off.
Dave?
Nah, I'm good by it, is what I use.
The way it is now?
It, I, I use my usual. This year I ended up building another week because of the flood. And I work, because I was gonna take every Friday off until I used it up. I ended up building another week, so I ended up a week because I worked during the flood.
And how, Rich, how do you, what do you think about it?
Well, I think walking it up to $120, something like that is a little compromise with me.
How do you feel about it, John, instead of going back to the way it is, just going up?
My initial response to this was zero, comped up. And I said, "No, I'll go to 80." That's where I stay at 80.
I, I don't like the, I don't like the replenishment idea, it bothers me. So I guess, I was within John's corner. But I guess I could go with the 120 if there's no replenishment, perhaps, as I look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I could do the...
The replenishment is a, is a nightmare for everybody.
It is.
Not, not for the employees, but for office and keeping record track and, and all those types of things. And it just doesn't make sense that you just get more, you know what I mean? It's, it should have an end.
And then it creates this remaining liability because of the carryover and so forth. I can do a quick calculation of 120 and tell the board.
So historically, how many hours are they, what do we call 120, historically?
You have the flexibility through the, based on the Fair Labor Standards Act, to offer up to 240. But you can offer lower than that. I think there was a misunderstanding at one point that we had to offer 240. You can offer up to 240.
But you also have the, you also have the opportunity under the Fair Labor's Act of not to give them any time off and pay them for the, for the comp.
Yeah, yeah.
You have that too. Or, or you have an opportunity, say, middle of April, it's mud season. Well, it's not quite mud season, but you'd want somebody around to do something. But it's, 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 it's nice out, but there's no, and you have, you just tell everybody, you have, you take 40 hours off, you use your 40 hours of comp time. I mean, that's, that's all in the favor of Fair Labor's Act too. So you don't have to, you don't have to allow them, you have to allow them on 240 comp time, but you don't have to allow them the time off. You can pay, pay it for them or you can tell them when they gotta take the time off. That's all part of the Fair Labor's Act. And you talk about it as a benefit to the, to the employees. Yeah, it is, it's the way it works out. But the whole thing is designed as a benefit to the employer so that he can have them work overtime and then give them comp time.
Absolutely, I mean, Bill, that's the whole idea.
It's a two-way street.
The creation of comp time was, was in the employer, so that you could have a rationalize.
But what Bill says is absolutely correct. When business slows down, that's when you take your comp, comp time. I'm not saying that's right, I'm not saying that's what we should do.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying that's the Fair Labor's Act, I mean, let's get the thing on.
Well, in a lot of ways, that would be better. If you could have, if, if you had a week, there was nothing to be done, you could give all the employees off for the week and then everybody would, then you wouldn't have to have one person working, two, two people working or whatever.
Yeah, Joe, you're excused.
And even though we're clear...
I mean, the problem is that you never know, there's always a disaster, a tree falls down or something like that.
Well, it's like this, we'll be working home breakfast, you know? We won't be with our families, we'll be out plowing.
No, I understand that and, and I understand the job. And John and I have talked about it. Basically, after, when, when winter comes, you don't have a life. And that's, that's, and that's, that's what it is.
Summer, you dictate what our life's gonna be in the summer with our comp. That's the way I take it.
Say that again, Dave.
That you, you guys, you as a board will dictate what we do with our comp, when we do it, in the summer months.
How do we, how does that happen?
Well, like you're saying, you could say that you guys are gonna...
No, I'm saying...
Oh, no, I don't think we start like that.
I'm not saying...
What Bill's saying is fair...
Say you should.
No, 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 listen to me. Don't try to pull the heat out. When, what Bill is saying, this is the fair labor law, how it's written. No one here, what I heard, is saying that's where the direction we should go down. Matter of fact, I would not say that's a direction we should go down because I don't think we'd get it in return on the other side, what we need you guys to do. So I'm not in no way saying, and I don't think that's what Bill would say either. He's saying this is the law, how it is set up. And what I'm saying, working in the manufacturing, when both places don't have comp time, they have you time and half, that's what you get paid. You work, you get paid, that's it. Some shops do have comp time. And when business goes slow, they'll pat you on the shoulder and say, "Hey, take off next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday," or whatever. They totally dictate to you what you, what you pay. Again, I'm not saying we should go down that road. But this was not, I don't think, fully designed at the time when it was passed, that 10 years ago or whenever it was.
No, three years ago.
No, 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 the whole...
You mean the, for the comp time for the town of Grafton?
Oh, no, for, how, this first, this, comp time is not, other than it's been, been around for decades.
It's been in Grafton for 20.
But this, it could be, yeah. This wasn't for the employees solely in month. I mean, it was...
It was so that you could keep control of the cash cost of overtime by giving people something desirable, mainly time off.
Yep.
But it equals the same, still at 1.5 rate. So going to 126 raises the $8,514 cost of comp time. So going to 126 raises the $8,514 cost of comp time paid to $12,770.
And we want to find a balance that we can live with, that's reasonable for us and obviously works for them.
Yep.
I mean, we need them as much as they need us, you know?
Yeah, I think that's right. So this is, so we're now going to do the calculation for the... So if we had 120 fixed, the... Because it just so happens that if you look over on the left-hand column, the hours of the free comp time, you can see that if you, if you allow 120, you're only going to be 19 and a half off of days and 12 and a half off of bills. The only one that's really going to have a reduction in that is Danny, who's at 92.75. And, yeah, and Mike, if he takes his full 120, is going to have a greater amount than you're getting now. So that sum then is, so that's the hours of overtime with the 120 maximum. I mean, if this is something we want to do, which I think it's a reasonable compromise, I really do. I hear what Danny is saying, I'm not, I'm not diminishing what Danny is saying, is that he likes it the way it is. And I think that part of our jobs as selectors is to find a balance.
I agree.
And Danny and his team have been fully informed about this whole process the whole way, right, Danny?
Yep.
And so it just, I don't know, Joe, do you think we should try a motion?
Well, I think, I mean, at some point, we have to, we can't stay here all night discussing it. So somebody make a motion, and let's see what happens.
I'll make a motion.
That?
It'd be 120 max.
And with no...
With no replenishment, it'd be fixed.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't hear, I didn't, so which one of these are we talking about? This one on this page?
So we're talking about, Bill, the...
No, I know which one is Kathy talking about, this one?
This one, comp time without replenishment.
Okay.
And in that one, we would change the number 80 to the number 120.
It would be exactly the same, Bill, I think, except 80 goes to 120.
Exactly.
No carryover?
No carryover.
The only thing is, within a single paper, an employee reaches the match of the balance of 80 hours, that has to be changed to 120.
The whole thing would be 120.
And then anything over that, then they pay over that.
That's right.
Stupid question.
So I second the motion, sorry.
I was going to say, stupid question, but maybe you can, can we try for one winter season and one summer season, see if it works out?
Well, you can only, you can only do this, and next year, when you review, you can change it again. You can change the policy, you know?
To the, yeah, we can definitely, because the numbers are on the estimates.
I'm not saying you should.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, if, if, yeah, I don't know what I'm saying at this point.
This doesn't seem...
Dave?
Yeah, I have a question. You guys passed this tonight. We already got some comp time accrued.
Well, it doesn't affect this year.
No, so that's right.
That's just what I wanted to say.
Doesn't affect this year, only, this only affects starting January 1.
So the remaining, I spoke with Kim about this today. Her recommendation is, and mine, and mine too, and I'm bringing it up to the selectors now, is you see the far-right corner, the far-right column called Dollars Remaining, and the Comp Time Remaining. That's the comp time remaining as of 1217. These numbers will change by 1231, especially after a snowstorm, et cetera. The comp time remaining will be grandfathered. If we go to no replenishment, the comp time remaining as of the end of the calendar year 2021 will be grandfathered until 2022, and then no carryover after that. We'll have to have a separate motion on that.
So they're going to, so the 120 goes, goes on?
No, the 120, okay, let me...
Assuming you pass the 120, and you're going to have the carryover?
No, just the total amount, Joe. So it's, it's just, it won't get added to the 120, it'll just be grandfathered. So in Mike's example, for example, the 70, he'll be grandfathered that 70 hours at 1826. See where it says Dollars Remaining?
Yeah, I see that, but I'm a little confused. How does it get paid out? They take the time off, they get the money?
No, they can't, they have to get the money.
Oh, the money, okay, that's all I understand.
We're not going to add it to the 120.
No, that's, that's not...
They get the money, yeah. I mean, we can have, I'm saying, that's what Kim and I talked about today.
No, no, I understand.
You're on your point, we got to have a selector agreement on that.
So is there a motion?
So you need a motion?
So we have a motion on the floor of 120.
Okay.
Do we have a second to that?
I seconded it.
Kathy seconded, Kathy made it, Suzanne seconded. Do we have some discussion on this motion?
I think it's been discussed. No, I, I guess I'm fine with it. My head's spinning a little bit with all these numbers.
So I think we could make it pending a subsequent analysis.
No, I, I think, I think we should, I'd like to see into the motion that we review this at the end of the year and see how it works.
At the end of this, what you're going to do?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to add that to the motion.
Yeah, I agree.
So that if, if the employees are not happy with it, if we're not happy with it, and it doesn't work, then we, it forces us to go review it again.
Right.
Rather than just assuming it's going to be there.
Okay, I don't know, what, when you mean, what, end of what year?
This is year 2023.
You know, when we do our budgets and stuff like that, we would review their personnel policy again to make a change.
This will be in...
But it would force, it would force us to look at the personal policy, whether we want to change it or not, but it would be, it would be an action item that we would have to do in November, December, or whatever the case may come to be.
Are we talking 2022 or 2023? Well, fiscal year 2023. January to July 2022, and July to December 2022, fiscal year 2023.
No, I didn't understand that.
No.
Are you going to, let's just leave it, you're going to review it December of 2022?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, now that's added to the motion, you have to get them to add it to the motion.
Yeah, you have to add that, Kathy.
If you want.
You want to add that?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So, you'll second the addition?
Absolutely.
John, you have any, I know, I know how you feel, but do you have anything you want to say about it? Kathy, so let's call a vote. So I guess we should, we're going to have to do a hand vote, I think it's enough here. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, so we have, we have four ayes, one opposed. Okay?
Okay, that's it. I just want to wrap up by saying thank you to Danny, to Mike, to Dave, and to Bill, for all their help, and also Kim.
Okay, we're not done with the budget yet.
No, wait a minute, you're not done with anything yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, you haven't approved the policy.
No, no, I understand that.
All you've done is this, is this...
All we've done is the thing.
This one page.
Do you want to go ahead and try to approve the policy tonight?
Well, if you don't, then you're going to have another special meeting between Christmas and New Year's.
If you don't, then this doesn't take effect.
No. You have to, you have to approve the policy.
Okay, so then I'll move that we accept that we adopt the proposed personnel policy, the revisions, with the revisions that we discussed tonight, and the replacement of Section 28 with the overtime and compensatory time off without replenishment.
Do you have a second to that?
I second that.
Now, now we can discuss about the other aspects of the policy, if anybody has any questions, that have been proposed. That includes the harassment area, that includes the other, the other additions that were made and subtracted, made by the committee. So everybody's okay with that?
And it's the version that says December 20, not 2021.
So if that's the case, so all in favor of the personnel, the personnel policy as amended and discussed? Say aye.
Aye.
Polls?
No.
Okay, John's opposed the policy, yeah, so it's 40. Okay? Okay, so now we have to deal with...
No, you have another thing. You were saying the comp time, you're naming it the end of 2021, it's grandfathered to the end of 2022, you haven't done that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, then we can discuss it. The motion is that we grandfather the, the comp time remaining from calendar year 2021 to calendar year 2022. And that the calculation is made as it would have been if the comp time were paid off at the end of 2021, which would mean these comp time hours remaining at the regular rate for a total of $4369.
Do we have a second for that?
Well, I'm not sure. So what we're saying, at the rate of pay today?
Yeah, not at the new rate, the old rate. Do we have a second for that?
I have a second, John.
Do we have any discussion? I think John wants, let's clarify that it is, that would be paid off at the old rate, assuming the budget goes forward.
It's a regular rate.
Right, assuming the budget goes through with the call.
That's right, so that if the, so, I mean, employees will have the option then of going ahead and cashing it out by the end of this year, which would make perfect sense, if they're going to get the regular rate, they might just go ahead and cash it out this year. But we have, we're springing this on them, so they may have tax ramifications of doing that, whatever. They may want to hold off until the next year so that they can plan for that. We have not given them any opportunity to plan for an additional compensation.
All right, but if they hold, if they hold, they get paid at still the old rate?
The old, right. That's my, that's my...
That's the motion.
Motion.
Yeah, that's the motion, I understand.
Okay, and that, and they can wait till, all the way till December of 2022 to be paid at today's rate?
Correct.
Any other discussion on that motion? Why anybody would want to wait to the end of 2022 to get their money?
I think it would be very confusing to the one doing it, that you're going to have, you could possibly have two different rates of comp time. Am I correct in that?
No, no, Danny, it doesn't get added on.
No, doesn't get added on.
It gets, it's like a lump sum that you're going to get. So your, your lump sum would be $1,244.
So what you're saying is...
But that, this number could change because you're going to be... This is only as of 1217, it'll be as of 2021.
You're saying you can carry that comp line into the...
You can't carry the comp time, you can carry the money.
So let me, you can carry the money. Let me make it really clear.
Well, we got to carry it.
We passed, we passed, I'm sorry, Dave.
I get it, I can see what you're saying now. You're not going to get the time off, you can just...
Consider it as a bonus, okay? You can take your bonus in, in this year, or you can take your bonus next year, but the bonus doesn't change.
Why wouldn't you even have a motion on it then? Because we're probably going to take the money. I was saying, we've already worked it, and we were saving towards our comp time.
No.
We still need a motion.
It's not 120 plus 70, so you have 190. See what I'm saying? It's 120 plus 70.
I thought here, whatever we had carried across toward the 120 cap of next year. So we wouldn't be building, so say I have 40 hours. I don't build that extra 40 to the 1, I'm that much closer to my 120.
I see.
That's what I thought you were meaning by carrying it over. Which doesn't, no, it doesn't matter.
Is that, is that a more desirable, okay?
No, no, just, I think you guys need to...
That's the way I thought it was going to be.
Okay.
So if it's the money, I'm going to just get paid out for it, I'm not going to wait for it. I was waiting, I was thinking that since you guys were changing the policy, then I already, because we've already gone into winter, and I've saved some of my comp time, that it would be carried over until the next year changes.
You don't need to carry over the money.
But I want to make sure we're not missing something for you.
No, I brought up my concerns. I hope you didn't take it as I was bullying you.
Oh.
I was, I was...
I got far as going in there.
And I gave my...
Okay, okay.
So you know, I just thought of one thing.
I wish you said that to Joe.
I don't want to get this any more convoluted than it already is. But I'm changing the game, are we changing the rules halfway through the game? Because, because winter has started. Well, that's, that's my base. I don't know if that's a concern or not.
No, it has, it has nothing to do with it. If they gain another 80 hours of comp time, well, not 80 hours, but whatever they get. Okay, on December 31st, whatever that comp time is, they get paid for at the rate of the pay in this year. It doesn't get carried over. January 1st, if it's a snowstorm, and they get the overtime, comp time, whatever happens starts January 1st.
I want to make sure we're not missing anything either, because I do feel this is a transition year.
Well, what I'm saying is, before, we could start, when the snow started, we started saving our comp time so I could make sure I got my 80 hours.
But you can't this year, you can do it next year.
I guess you're not getting what I'm saying.
Say it again.
I've already started building my comp time to save up before you guys change this for next year for my 80 hours. And I got like 14, now I have 26 this coming year.
Were you going to use your 13, 13 hours that you built up?
Yeah, and I got 26 coming this week.
You're going to apply that to your new 80 hours?
Yes, and now I'm not going to be able to, I got paid.
Is that what you were saying to me?
I didn't carry it away.
40 hours?
So now you get paid for it.
I, no, I was just wanting to be clear what you meant by carrying over. You, I understand what you're saying.
This is so ridiculous.
Well, carry over, carry over is a very confusing word, you're not carrying anything over.
It's remaining.
It's...
That's the word that you sound your check stub is remaining.
The motion states on the floor is that at the end of the calendar year 21, whatever comp time has not been used, they get paid for in a form of a bonus.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's not really a bonus, it's already worked.
I'm just using, I'm just using the terminology, okay?
That's right, that's right.
And if you don't, if you choose not to take that money, and you choose to take it on February 1st of 2022, you can't. But it will be at the rate of the pay, the pay of 2021.
I just thought, I wanted to explain to us that we were going to be able to carry our comp time over, so...
It's a lot simpler than that, you guys can make way...
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I have 36 hours, I'm going to get paid for it because, because with inflation in February, it isn't going to be 36 hours, it's going to be 20 hours, so, so you're just...
Get the one hundred.
Having us take the pay for the comp time we have right now, and we start all over.
Exactly, okay, that's it.
We don't need that motion on that.
Well, we need the motion, but it doesn't going to make any effect.
Okay, so the motion stands.
So any more discussion on the motion, I think Bill put it very simply, okay? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you opposing most in favor?
Favorite?
Favorite, okay. All right, okay. Okay, so, can you second that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Now, done with all that comp time, and the comp that is a policy, now. Now we have to deal with the budget.
Okay.
Okay? So this is probably the last time we can meet if you want to change the budget. And I think it was put on there for a reason of possibly the COLA tag. I think that's why it was on there.
Okay, but, you keep saying every time we meet that this is the final time.
No, it's not, but...
No, no. It'll be done January, or if you're meeting to do it. If you didn't want to do anything tonight, you guys would be absolutely...
Why?
You're right. I always think of calendar year, not, not budget, you know, not the budget.
What are you putting it there for? I'm not understanding why COLA is on there.
There was, there was, one of the select members came to me and said, did we approve the COLA? And I said, we did at the budget meeting.
Right.
So this is, this is an opportunity to revisit that if anybody wants to. If not, it was approved, and it should go on unless...
Okay.
Want to change, that's the only reason why it's on there.
Okay, okay. So we're revisiting something we already approved?
It was just a revision of the COLA, basically is what it was. Or anything else on the budget that you wanted to question.
Okay.
But it was brought to my attention, the COLA.
Okay.
But if you don't have anything...
There's nothing, then we'll discuss everything.
Okay, I, I don't think we've put it on there.
Okay, all right. Bill, the one-twenty-one status on the thirty-nine ninety-two. That's on there, if Rich has anything new to add.
Nothing really new, the only, I heard from, guy from the, I always can't get rid of this...
John Donner.
John Donner, the Vermont Environmental Bureau. The system is working down there. The old slab that we know has contamination. It is being rectified, it is working that system, but they picked up some other contaminants in the atmosphere that they're still deeming the building unsafe to work in. But they don't know exactly what it is at this point. It could be something very benign, or it could be something, who knows? They are hoping at some point, twelve-month period-ish, that they'll be able to deem that building safe again to occupy. Is the roundabout. It's no fault.
Okay.
Is anybody occupying a building now inside? No.
Cheap tubes, guy's called. They're only supposed to be in that building, I forgot how many hours a week now, that because of the air quality. Eight hours a week, or, I kind of forget now, two or three hours a day is the recommendation, but...
Okay, but that's really not our concern, so.
Well, three, three people so far are not cancer-related to that building.
Well, yeah.
I don't know whether it's because of that, I don't really know, but, yeah.
No, no idea.
I'm laughing, but it's not funny.
All right, committee reports. I'd like to, I'd like to have Rich Thompson be appointed to the Waste Order, Parks and Buildings and to take Sue Allen's place. Rich has consented, so we just need a motion to, to make that happen.
That's right. So Waste Water and...
And Parks.
So Sue had all three of them?
Mm-hmm. Sue was on all three?
After this meeting, I don't know what I do.
So somebody make a motion to that, Jack?
I'll move second.
Okay, any other discussion? All of this, you agree?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. John, nothing on the cemeteries, right?
No, Bill, you haven't sent the letter yet.
I haven't, no.
Well, does it say you haven't heard, or hasn't the letter been sent?
I haven't heard, and I haven't sent him a reminder that he was getting back to us.
Okay, we'll make sure we get the letter out.
No, we'll do it tomorrow.
Highway Committee? Parks Committee? There's, the only thing I can say is that they can't start bargaining until the weather, if everything freezes up, so that's where that stands. Personnel Committee, I think we've done, unless you have some more?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say, Joe, is that, and I, I want to make a personal comment as my board member. On the, at the beginning of the meeting about the forms, to use, to use Rich's word, I was feeling bullied. And I think that Kathy and I have done an enormous body of work on this personnel committee, on this personnel policy. And I, I would just like the select members to counterbalance the, the issue with the form to the body of work we have done revising the personnel policy and coming to this kind of conclusion. And I'd like to ask you to reflect on that too, Joe, in terms of your view.
I had, I had no, no argument with the work you've done, it was just use of the form. That's my own point. Buildings Committee?
The, oh, yes, I would like, Kathy would, once, would lead this. We have, as I sent to you the updates on where he has, there's still preliminary plans, but this is all the ADA work that would be done along with the elevator work. And I'd like to be able to get that back to the architect soon as possible so that he can keep going ahead with this, if you guys agree with it. And because he hopes to get it all done so that it can be bid out in March. And no, I'm sorry, bid out before March, and by the end of March have it, the bid awarded to wherever it's gonna go. But that's, that's what his time is.
So what, what Bill and I did, we, he helped me using these forms and, and the design that was gonna be done to bring compliance with the handicap for the bathrooms, the doorways, the extra profit downstairs. So I thank Bill for, you know, showing me, you know, you can look at designs, and I don't know what I was looking at, so I could see it, because it could be what he's gonna do, or what they are gonna do. And it looks really good, and I, I said, yeah, I think it's a go, so. Just wanted to share it with you guys, and if you have any comments.
How was it around? What, we have estimated cost on this stuff, and is it grant funded, or is it taxpayer-funded?
Further through ARC.
It's...
Well, further through the ARC, around one-hundred and ninety thousand, or two-hundred and one thousand that the town received from the feds.
Okay.
And we already had, what, money from the foundation? The twenty-five thousand?
No, ten thousand from the foundation, so far.
And we're hoping for more, and then we, and we do have a little bit of... Only thing, if I'd like you to approve this, the only thing that needed to be, needed to be added is, and I talked to Jeff Martell, the resident here, who's an architect, we need to note where he's removing the closet, we need to note that he, someone has to move that air thing, the heat exchange. Because if you don't know that, and the architect doesn't do it, then it's gonna be an add-on. So I'm gonna tell him to make sure that they handle the, the heat exchange. What do you call it?
The radiator?
Huh?
The radiator, a heat exchanger?
No, 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 the radiator, yes, the things that we're gonna put up here.
Oh, the, here, the...
Heat pump?
Heat pump, yeah, so we have to tell them to...
So the one-ninety, that's all the heat pump and the elevator?
Well, it's not gonna cost one-ninety, we don't think.
This, this should be somewhere around one-forty.
Could we have a schedule of what the costs are gonna be now that they're coming together?
No, he will, if he does.
So you're gonna do best of it.
Okay, so the architect's gonna provide that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I use those roof poundings too, or you can't fit the car?
It's too small.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so. I was gonna ask you what the occupancy for this was.
Fifty.
Fifty? Some years.
It's too small, it's probably big enough, but in some, some years.
Well, eight years ago, we had time meeting here.
And if the state codifies virtual meetings as, as regular meetings, then probably we'll have fewer people coming, showing up at the meeting too, so. But, which is too bad, because you want them to both have the meeting, so.
Do we need, do we need a...
I'd like to, I'd like to have a motion.
We need a motion here.
For the architect to go ahead.
Somebody make a motion to approve the architect's conceptual plans to, as presented?
I'll move.
Okay. Second?
Second?
Okay. You look like you have discussion.
Oh, I'm very happy, I'm thrilled that you're making such progress on this.
So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Waste Water, Bill and I had a meeting with Time Bond and Lynette from the state on Friday for almost two hours, going over Time Bond's contract and the changes that Lynette had suggested, and what the federal government and what the state has mandated for their proposal to do the study. And so that, that is, we were to receive that today from Time Bond, it has not come in. And once that comes in and it's finalized, then we will send it to the board for, it'll be on the agenda, hopefully on the January meeting. We also spent a good portion of the time doing this priority list application, which is very complicated. We're not doing it, Lynette's not doing it, but Time Bond's doing it. And so that's supposed to be coming in as well. And then that'll have to go to Lynette to make sure that we cross every eye, dot and eye. Also, they recommended that we deal with the, what is it, the rural, what's the, what's the one we have a meeting with?
Vermont Rural.
Yeah, something like that, anyway.
Developmental.
So we're, we're gonna try and have a meeting in January. Lynette said there might be some additional funding there. So we'll, we'll see what that's all about. So that's where we are, and it's moving forward.
A lot of detail, just bring up the speed just a little bit. I don't know, I haven't been following anything in town for a year now.
Okay, the board voted to accept sixty-eight, fifty-eight thousand, I forget what it is, a grant to do a wastewater study in town, okay? That's fifty-eight thousand and change, or whatever it is, is, there's no obligation for us to pay it back unless the town approves a wastewater system down the line at a town meeting or whatever. So if, if, so the Time Bond was selected by the committee, the original committee, to be the engineer, okay? So now, we're working with Lynette, who is with the, 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 well, she's USDA...
U.S.B.A., Natural Resources.
Yeah, Natural Resources, and the whole, it's all complicated, but it's all tied up together. To get, to get Time Bond's contract, and, and to get this form, this priority list application form in the hands of the state. We have, we're on the list, it's not, we didn't, we didn't lose anything. It's just that we, we had never really filed the paperwork. It's a twenty-page application, very, very difficult. And it's interesting to know, one of the questions was how many fail septic systems we've had so far since two thousand nine, seven?
Two thousand and seven.
Yeah, five. Five fail septic, septic systems, and four others. Three or four others?
Three or four others that completely...
But we're not sure why they were rebuilt, or what happened. So that was one of the questions. And the more you answer these questions about what your needs are for the village septic system, the more points you get, and that puts you in a higher percentage to get more, to get... Eventually, if, if, if this is, if this is approved by the town, I mean, we're a long way away from that. Time Bond probably won't even begin to study until sometime in April or May. And I don't know how long it's gonna take, I haven't seen, I don't remember in terms of contract. Then, but in the, in the, in the process of this whole thing, there's a series of town meetings, public meetings to talk to the public and get their input, why, where, how, what it's gonna do for the town. So all this has gotta happen. And we're probably talking, if, to a vote, probably, if I had a guess, two years?
The hard funding is only available through 2024, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I don't, I'm not sure, but anyway.
They're looking at, they're looking at the town meetings that are, that go on, there's several town meetings with the study. The study to be completed by the end of next year, and that the construction would be sometime before the end of 2023, if it is approved by the town.
Yeah, if it is approved. And if the town does not approve it, then you take the study like the other two have already been done, and you put it in the, in the shop.
And there's no payback? This is granted, there's no pay.
No, no payback.
Payback if you're...
So this is gonna be very interesting, because we're having a brick built and a possible water system.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, that's the show.
Thank you.
Other business?
I don't know.
If not, public comment? I don't think we have any public comment.